All right, we'll go ahead and call this meeting to order. Thank you all for being here this evening. Commissioner Jerry Simpson, would you lead us in a word of prayer, please?
Sure. Mr. Bell?
Gracious God, we're grateful for the day, the opportunity to come together as friends and colleagues and citizens to do the business of the county. We ask that you be with us today, Lord, and that you put your grace and love around us that we may be wise and make decisions that are in the best interest of the citizens of this county, and that is pleasing that we ask these things in Christ's name. Amen.
Join us for the pledge.
One nation, to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic which stands one nation, indivisible, with clear due justice for all.
All right. It is my understanding that the school board has some business that they need to attend to right after this meeting. So I'm going to change the agenda here a little bit, and we're going to move item number two and three to one and two, and we'll move the budget to number three, if everyone is in agreement with that. Okay? Very good. We'll call on the county manager who will give us a little background that we'll turn over to schools.
Okay. On item number two, the request from the Board of Education. If you recall, at your June 19 meeting, you heard this item. This is taking the savings of $173,082 from HVAC upgrades at Sun Valley Middle School and transferring them to Unionville Elementary School for chiller replacement, Marvin Ridge, Sun Valley, and Prospect, all elementary schools for fire alarm upgrades. At your June 19 meeting, you requested additional information, and the information we received from the schools is that on the budgeted number for the Unionville chiller, it was from their 2009 capital facility study, and had, the numbers had not been updated since 2009. And the mechanical and energy code had been revised several times since 2009. Also, their original budget was based upon only one chiller. As the present 170-ton chiller was not having problems, but apparently at this point in time, they are also needing to replace that chiller. On the fire alarm upgrades at Marvin, Waxaw, and Prospect, they were also from the 2009 capital facility study, and they were actually based off of the 2007 fire alarm code. And that code is revised every three years. So there have been significant code changes that have occurred in that period of time as well, and that's the justification we received from the Board of Education and their staff.
All right. You all have anything to add to that?
No.
All right. Very good. Any motion or any discussion?
I'd like a motion. We approve the transfer of the requested funds to address the chiller and the fire alarm.
All right. They have a motion. Any discussion? All in favor? Signify by saying aye. Aye? Opposed? No? That'll take us to item number three.
On the next item, you also considered...
Two, my apologies.
On the next item, you had also considered this at your June 19 meeting. This was on the $150,000 for GPS systems. That's in their fiscal year '17 capital budget. Since they've gone with a lease, they have $140,752 in savings on that. The revised request, and it has been changed a little bit from what was presented in your agenda, based upon the actions of the school board last night in their special meeting, is that they requested that $137,000 of those savings be moved to replacing a chiller at Shiloh Elementary School, and then I assume the remaining balance between the $147 and $152 and the $137 would just go into their building systems capital budget. Is that correct?
Exactly. Two chillers at...
Oh, is it two chillers? Okay.
Right now, one of the chillers is completely out. The other one is limping along. And as you may or may not remember, Shiloh is a year-round school, so it goes back into session at the end of July. So we'd like to get working on it with one down already and the one limping along before school starts for them. So we'd like to use it out of this year's budget and not put it into the '17-'18 budget. We've received the bids. We approved the lowest bid last night at the meeting, and that's where we are.
All right. Very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any discussion and/or motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the moving of $147,52.
I'm sorry. $137 to Shiloh. I apologize, because it's not written down. We just got this information. $137 to Shiloh Elementary for a replacement of those two chillers, and then the difference of 2,000, and I'm not going to sit here and do math real well, 2,000 and change goes just to their building systems. That'd be the additional savings.
A motion to move $137,000 from the GPS systems to Shiloh to replace the chillers with the balance of the funds moved over to their building.
All right. We've got a motion on the floor. Any discussion? All in favor? Signify by saying aye. Aye? Opposed? No? Very good. And that'll take us back to what we'll now call item number three.
Okay, Commissioners, I have a very brief, and I do mean brief, because I think it's a total of four slides or five slides of PowerPoint presentation that I'll go through real quickly, just to discuss a little bit of our fiscal year '18 operating capital budget. Just kind of a budget summary for the board that the operating and capital budget as revised incorporates all direction provided by the Board of Commissioners, which reduces the general government tax by .78 cents, the schools' tax rate by 1.22 cents, and the budget appropriately funds education, fire service, emergency medical services, debt service for the voter-approved general obligation bonds, and provides limited growth in core county services. Just to briefly highlight the process that we have been through, starting in January, where our first meeting was with the Board of Education on their bond projects through today. In addition to this, prior to your May 22 work session, we did have two-on-one briefings with the board members to go over some of the enhancements that were within the budget. We received additional direction from you all at your June 5 meeting, as well as at your June 19 meeting, as it related to adjustments to the budget. The adjustments that were made based upon your June 5 meeting and changes to the county manager's proposed budget is on this slide. We reduced the funding for the community information officer, where there's no longer going to be position. The monies that remain are to pay for a consultant. We eliminated the radio installation program and the associated facility. We eliminated the assistant fire marshal, detention officers, sheriff's operating costs, their part-time range master. We reduced comp and class by $250,000, the contingent election costs, contingent new election precincts. We reduced the funding for the radios, replacement of the general fund balance use for one-third, reduction to the UCPS capital, and reduction to the use of general fund balance, which resulted in total changes of $4.923, $710. At your June 19 meeting, the board requested that we go back and look at an additional $500,000 in reductions. Just to talk a little bit about these reductions, the first is a reduction in the library RFID. Originally, this program was to be accomplished at all four libraries within a single year. By reducing it by $150,000, it means we will only be able to do probably a couple of the libraries. The balance will have to be done over a subsequent year. The impact to that is that you're just not going to gain those efficiencies all within a single year. It'll be a multi-year project. On the attorney for land acquisition, right-of-way and easements, this is an item. We provided you additional information. By not funding this particular position, what that will mean is that only in the most egregious situations, as it relates to easement encroachments, we will not be able to address them. We won't have the staff. And your land acquisition easement and right-of-way acquisition for your Yatkin Water Treatment Plant, et cetera, will be done through probably your future county attorney. Compensation and classification, an additional 250 out of that, taking that to $500,000. What this means is you're just probably going to see potentially larger impacts in subsequent years, when our consultants originally looked at our pay schedule and where we were just as an overall glance in the market. That's how we came up with a million dollars, assuming we would have a multi-year implementation by taking an additional $250,000 out of that and taking it from a million in fiscal year '18 down to $500,000. It will just mean that that program will, it will take longer to fund that program once we receive the results in the fall. So those are the additional results that we are proposing to the board. Based upon the school board's meeting last night, they had, I believe the chairman had a discussion with their chair as it related to the $3 million reduction the school board met and identified those areas that they would recommend taking the money from. This is what they presented to us today. This, we have handed out to you at your seats, a modified Exhibit C, which takes this into account. So if there's a motion on the budget, it would have to include the ordinance, whatever the language is at this point, as amended to take this into account. This fits nicely within the way staff had actually budgeted for the schools this year, in which the last couple of years, we had actually budgeted by project. This year, because we had not received information from the schools as to, until last evening, as to where reductions would occur, we've actually budgeted them by, for lack of a better word, by buckets. So we have a building system buckets. We have a safety bucket. We have an ADA bucket. So these reductions fit in well with the way that we have put forward their particular budget recommendation. And so at this point, all that we have left is adoption of the budget and the associated tax rates.
All right. Thank you. Any discussion, comments, questions, and/or motion?
Yes. I'd like to. And can we go back to the slide that had the first page with the items that you were recommending? That's it?
This one?
Go back to one of the...
Yeah.
A couple of things that concerns me. One concerns the detention officers. That's where we feed our sheriff's departments growth, and with our county growing, that's critical. I would recommend that we eliminate the community information officer. For two years, this board has denied that, has instructed staff not to fill that position. However, they took it upon themselves this year to fill it with a supplement, a supplemental or contractor. So I suggest we use that, and then we've got an emergency service administrative assistant that's still in there, that I question the total need for that. And between those two and a little bit from the general fund, we can fund the sheriff's detention officer and continue to maintain the staff that we needed. So I'd make a recommendation, we make those changes.
Commissioner, the only comment I would make as it relates to the detention officer is when we made that recommendation back on June 5, we did meet with the sheriff and ensure that he was comfortable with that reduction, and he indicated to staff that he was comfortable with that reduction.
I still make my recommendation, and I have one other question, too. I'd like to say with the $500,000 for comp and classification, I think one of the statements you made early on was that we had 25 upper management that are eligible for retirement, and utilizing that, would that not put us in a situation similar to the schools had with the superintendent and spiking? Because if you bump their salary next year and they retire, that's, that's then on out.
Well, we have, our executive directors and directors are under the same pay and classification system as all employees. They are under the same pay for performance system, so we do not give significant bonuses to those individuals. They receive, based upon performance, a 3%, a 4% increase. I'm not aware that we would cause any issues with respect to spiking. I don't know that we have actually looked at that particular situation, yet we do have individuals that over the next five years, we have a number of employees who are eligible for retirement over the next number of years, but, and I don't know if, and I hate to put Mr. Crick on the spot, but I really, I don't know that much about that particular legislation.
I don't either, to be honest with you. It's a very complex formula that's used to determine if there's a spiking issue, and, excuse me, I'm sure it would have to be looked at on an individual basis for each one. It has to do with the years of service and the amount paid into the system and the amount of the increase, if there were an increase. It's a good question. I don't know.
My understanding is that y'all got forgiveness for past, but going forth, it's going forth that it applies, I think was my understanding.
It's the state's appeal.
On the state appeal, yes. So there's a lot we don't know that could impact us with going forward with that.
I know when we looked at this at one point in the past, and I won't tell you that this was any extensive evaluation, but when Mr. Baker retired, one of the reasons he retired when he did was because of the fact that he'd been promoted on an interim basis to county manager, and then had been, once a county manager was hired, he was put back in. So that would have impacted his retirement. And the only other one that I am aware of that has had that kind of significant adjustment in pay back and forth would be Mr. Black, our planning director, because he was county manager, interim county manager for a while. I know when the issue came up with the schools, we did do a cursory, and I would say very cursory review, and those were the only two that became, that were identified at that time, who had received a significant increase above what an employee would normally receive, and then had gone back to a different salary when they returned to their original positions.
As you can see, we're changing your bands and uplifting and applying that money would give you the same implications.
And I, we have not researched that, so I can only provide you with the limited information I have.
The difference, Commissioner, in what you're, the two pieces you're referring to and the addition back, the add-back is $37,000. So are you suggesting that come from fund balance or...
Oh, between the two?
Yes.
And the difference?
If you take out the administrative assistants, $60,853, they remain there in for the contract for the community engagement, for the community engagement contract now, the manager's office, those are, that amounts to about $127, or $120,853, the cost of the detention positions, $157,870. So that leaves you at a balance of $37,016 that you would need in addition to balance that transaction, unless you're wanting to bump up the use of that.
Well, I think, I think the fund balances would be appropriate to use. We could look at other opportunities in here, but instead of going after another full headcount, that's why I said possibly fund balance could make up that difference.
Well, on the discussion we had on June 5, as it related to the fire marshals, and I believe it was Commissioner Lance Simpson who brought forward this concept, and actually I thought as a staff that it made sense, which is if one of the issues that we're having in not being able to get all of our inspections done is because of the fact that they're having to do so much administrative work, by adding an administrative assistant at a much lower rate of pay to that particular program, we could then evaluate whether or not that provided enough relief so that we would not need an additional fire marshal. That was a discussion that was at that point in time, and that was the vote that was taken at that point in time to not fund the fire marshal, but to fund the administrative assistant. And if, in fact, we came back next year and said, even with that change, we still find a need, we would have a documented trail versus right now what we were able to provide to the board. So I felt that that was a nice compromise.
Do we fill out paperwork and bring it back into the office, or do we utilize technology and fill out our laptops when doing an evaluation from a fire marshal's perspective?
I think it's, it may be paper-intensive. They also do plans review. They're also answering the phone. They're having to provide fire reports. It's a variety of duties, and as we stated in a number of our meetings, the administrative assistant is not just for the fire marshal. It's probably where the most significant need is, but that this particular position, there is no administrative assistant for the entire department, would support the entire department as appropriate.
Are you putting that in the form of a motion, or...
Yeah, that was my motion.
Okay. You want to restate your motion so we make sure we understand it.
That in order to find our detention officers for the need of the sheriff's department, that we eliminate the community information officer in totality. We've done it twice before. And then also to achieve the necessary funds, that we eliminate the emergency service administrative assistant and the shortfall that's made up out of general fund.
All right. Any discussion on the motion?
I will have to respectfully vote against that. Because I voted for some of the things you're asking to change, but I do understand your position, but I just want to make sure you understand.
No, that's fine. That's fine. We can agree to disagree respectfully.
Absolutely.
Yes.
Any further discussion? All in favor of the motion? Signify by saying aye. Opposed? No? Any additional discussion?
I had a conversation with the county manager shortly before the meeting, and what I had asked is the half a million dollar cut, which the staff was able to come to that half a million dollars. In going through the budget, what I would ask, and what I'm looking for, is that 2/10 of a penny beyond the 78.3. So in conversation with the county manager, what I had asked, given the growth that we see in revenue, not only on the add-on, but especially on the sales tax growth, and that just saw on the news today that they're not anticipating another crisis for some time, which knock on wood, hopefully that doesn't happen. But given all of the impacts, what I would like to see is the tax rate, not only the cuts put in of the half a million dollars, but have the tax rate overall adjusted back down on the county side by 2/10, which would take us down to an overall rate of 78.1 versus the 78.3. And I will thank the school, the Board of Education, for finding the cuts for the $3 million. I do appreciate that. I know it's never easy, but I also do want to thank the Board of Education for finding the budget to fund all of the ADA issues that have been out there for some time. And that's, that's one of the things that I do appreciate, being able to find some savings in the budget this year to help lessen the impact on taxpayers.
Appreciate that. We appreciate you allowing us to move the money from Newtown over for our new budget for the...
I'm sorry, I forgot to mention that, but yes, you did, you did suggest that. I apologize.
That's $480,000, 2/10.
In response to Commissioner Lance Simpson's comments, he and I did discuss that. The comp and class, $250,000 would get you down to 78.2 in your tax rate. What I did tell the commissioner, because as we all know, we are very close to the deadline for getting a budget adopted, that I was confident that whether it's relooking at our revenues, that we could make up the additional 1/10th, if that's the board's direction this evening.
Any idea where that 10th would come from?
We're going to probably relook at our revenues. I'm not recommending that we cut any positions, but we may look at our sales tax, you know, bumping them up an additional $250,000. We'll just have to look at it and see where, since the discussion happened at 4:57, I probably have no better idea than what I've just been able to relay.
Probably because you have to adopt a balanced budget.
Right.
You would put it into fund balance.
Yeah.
You bump up fund balance usage because it has, you have to be balanced, so...
And that would be my expectation, because I believe our revenue growth on the add-on and on the sales tax would be more than enough to cover that and still allow some access by year end.
And I apologize to our CFO. I did not get an opportunity to discuss that with you before the meeting.
And I will not make that into a motion, allowing some other discussion.
Any additional discussion? And/or a motion?
You got to find the motion.
The action requested is adopt the fiscal year 2018 operating capital budget ordinance as amended because of Exhibit C, which relates to the schools and what they have submitted to us today, and the associated tax rate and fees. And if you are recommending a tax rate different from the 78.3 total, then that would be part of your motion.
So the new county rate would be 26.84? Am I math right?
26.84.
26.84. 26.84. 26.84.
We had 78.3 before.
Well, this is what you, this is where you'd be at. This is the general fund. You'll look on your screens. So item one right here would be your additional expenditure reduction, because these are reductions, of 250. Your fund balance usage, in this case a negative, is an add-back. So that changes your tax rate right here down to 26.84. You're correct. It would take your overall tax rate down, you're down a 1/10, but you're talking about the additional 250 going against that as well, so you should be able to do it this way. So they're going into, there's your net change.
With the schools.
0.2.
That's even worse.
To...
How far?
27. 26.84. You go from 27.04, which is your current, where we're working at right now, your 0.2 reduction, because you're pushing the 250 instead of, pushing that savings to fund balance, you're increasing the use of fund balance in this case. So you go down to 26.84 on the general county government tax.
Which takes us to 78.1.
Should take you to 78.1. Should take you to 78.1.
And a net increase year over year of 1.1.
I have that number, I have to go back a little bit, because it deals with the fund balance. So usually you don't include the fund balance number because it's capital, it's 1/10 balance.
So I'll make a motion, Jeff, if I missed something, please let me know. Make a motion to approve the fiscal 2018 operating capital budget ordinance with the revised attachments, revision C from the schools, showing the reduction in capital of $3,040,000 and the adjustment to the budget presented by the county manager tonight for the additional half a million and another $250,000 from fund balance, resulting in a general county tax of 26.84, a EMS of 2.63, a fire tax of 1.04, a school tax of 44.5, and the voter approved debt of 3.09, giving a tax rate of 78.1 cents.
All right. Have a motion, any discussion? Mr. Rushing?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And thank you to our school board members who were here tonight and the ones that voted the other night to do your cuts. I'm not going to support the budget this year, not because I have any hard feelings toward the school system. I think you guys have done an outstanding job of cutting. You've gone above and beyond, I think, even with what we had talked about originally. The money that the school system brings into our accounting, we talked about that, being close to $400 million a year in our local economy. You're a very good partner with us, you're very good, you've been outstanding to work with as far as I'm concerned, this budget cycle. And my commitment to you when we started out working with this was that I would not vote to raise taxes if you came up with those cuts, and I'm going to stick true to that. I do appreciate the fact that my fellow board members have made some cuts to our budget. I think that next year, we should do the process a little bit differently. I think that a lot could be desired from our staff coming in and telling us what we were going to do to begin with, maybe get a little bit more direction from the board up front, instead of on the tail end of this. I would say next year, we shouldn't send conflicting signals to the school system. The discussions that we had with the school board members and the discussion that came from our staff was a little bit different. Again, I think we can do better in all fronts, and I, again, appreciate what you guys have done in the school board to cut your budget and to try to live within the current tax rate. And that would be my desire, is to live within our current tax rate and make that work, but that's why my vote will be none.
Any other discussion? Mr. Hill?
I'd like to, I'd like to commend this board for getting creative, and the school board for eliminating taxes that potentially would come with the bond referendums. You're to be commended. I cannot support this budget. I've said it upfront, I disagree with the fire tax when we have ample funds not to have to pass on to the citizens of this county. A fire tax that actually taxes Monroe and Weddington, and they get zero for it. So, in looking at the fire budget, we had a conversation about a month ago, and it was identified they had exorbitant features in there for air packs and equipment that were known to be high, and that's what was used to come up with this fire tax. So I can't support this budget as well.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion? Signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Two? And with that...
I believe that is your agenda for this?
That is our agenda. We will close with Commissioner comments. Commissioner Jerry Simpson?
I think we do have one more item. Did we do activity buses?
Yes, we did.
Certainly did, thank you. Mr. Simpson?
Famous Chairman, I would just like, as many of the other board members have, to give kudos to the school board for the work on that and the cuts that you made in your capital side. As always, you never come up with a perfect budget. I think that some of the things that we may be reduced or cut out, pay me now or pay me later, we're going to end up having to pay for that. I know every commissioner that sits here wants to have no tax increase or tax cuts or whatever. We want to limit cost to the citizens of services. But with growth comes demand for services. And that being said, I'd like to thank the manager and her staff for the work they did to make an effort to provide quality services and good government for the citizens in union counties. Thank you.
Mr. Rushing?
No comment.
Mr. Lance Simpson?
Again, I'll thank the Board of Education for amending their budget and for staff for going through this process. Again, it's never easy to raise taxes. I approached this, we had a 3.09 cent bond referendum that passed, but rather than just pass all of that back on to the citizens, I think everyone has done a great job in trying to find cuts to minimize that impact to the county. While the citizens have voted for it and they agree with it, they don't necessarily agree with spending every penny that you have. So I think being able to grow responsibly is the goal of every government, or should be the goal of every government. So I appreciate everything that everyone's done, including the members of this board, to try and get to a minimal impact for this year.
Commissioner Hills?
Again, I'd like to say thank you to the school board. Your leadership, your transparency is admirable, and we thank you very much for the way you've worked with us. And again, say that this board worked hard to minimize the tax increase, and they need to be commended.
And I'll just, again, thank staff for a job well done. I think you have gone through, gone above and beyond to try to make this work. I know it took a lot of hours and a lot of manpower and woman power, and so we certainly appreciate everything that was done there. I echo the sentiments of the board, that we do appreciate the school board's willingness to work with us and find their $3 million in cuts. And I think that what we have here is a very sound, sustainable budget that will serve the people of this county well. So with that, I'll make a motion that we adjourn. All in favor?
Excuse me, sir.
Yes?
School board chairman wanted to...
Chairman Agnes, commissioners, there was, there were a couple of items that were not mentioned tonight that were sent over today with our list, the list that totaled $3,040,000. The motion that approved this, that came to you, what was included in the motion were two requests to our commissioners. Those two requests that came with this list was to request for funding flexibility as long as we stay within our budget categories on the capital side. And the second request was if the school board could receive our fund balance in May. That would help us finalize our bids, accept a bid, and get everything through the pre-audit. So by the time the children get out of school in June, we could immediately start the work using our fund balance. And again, you know, continuing our conversation and letting the county know what we're going to use that for, of course. So our motion last night, when this $3,040,000 passed, seven to one, those are the two requests that are, that my board wanted to make to you with this list of items.
And Madam Chair, on the first item, I may have gone through it very quickly as part of my presentation, but the way that the school board's budget has been structured this year is in buckets. So as long as you are within your ADA bucket, you can move money around. As long as within your building systems budget, you can move money around.
This past school year, we were allowed more flexibility as long as we stayed within our roofing budget, but we didn't have that flexibility this past school year in the other budgets.
Correct. So we have gone from doing it project specific this year, and for fiscal year 18, to providing you in buckets so that you can, within projects within those buckets, you do that, have that flexibility.
Our board has that flexibility.
Yes. That's how the budget was structured this year.
So since it wasn't discussed tonight, we wanted to clarify that.
18, I'm sorry, 18.
Thank you. And then the possibility of receiving the fund balance earlier, if you would take that into consideration and let our board know. We'd appreciate it.
I had a long conversation with Mr. Covington today, the school CFO, concerning that specific item. And I think that we need to take a look at the general statute related to the timeline to determine what flexibility there is, because the timing of May, it gets a little weird because of the way the school board has to submit their budget, the manager has to submit their budget. So there's no action for you to take tonight on that item. We just need time to look at that issue. So we received that request, and I did have, again, a long conversation with Mr. Covington to clarify what exactly the request was, because I watched the meeting and I had some questions. So we'll look into that, and I think appropriately next year at that timeframe, we'll come back to you with a recommendation, how to proceed with that.
All right, we'll certainly take that into advisement.
Thank you, we appreciate it.
Thank you. All right. With that, motion to adjourn. All in favor?